Okay, let me follow September nineteen twenty twenty three. We're at School District Twenty Six Education Board of Education. I'm making up a hole to order at six P M. As a reminder, please turn off or silence all electronic devices. This is Jackson, please call board.
Being key, Mr. Jackson, Marrow. Here. Freeman here. And Rupi?
Here.
I am here, Fisher.
Here.
And Monsieur.
Here.
And the other four.
Okay, first up is visitor's comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize any members of the audience who approach the board with their common or question by completing a visitor's comment card. Please do note that the board and administration typically does not respond. If you wish for a response, please provide your name and number or email for a member of the board or administration to get back to you. Speakers are encouraged to limit their time to participate. This is being key at six oh two. A three minute timeline per speaker with an overall sixty minute maximum for visitor's comments. Majority of the board can vote to extend time as deemed appropriate. Having no visitors, we'll move on to new business services. The new business, which is business services, sorry. And Dr. Marguerite, you have four.
Okay, so I'm gonna go over a couple of slides before we head out on our tour. I thought I would kick it off by aligning just some common expectations, common language, so that as we are touring, we are have a similar understanding of what it is that works. So, um, if you need a... Thank you. Okay, so purpose of our tour today is really to put eyes on specific parts of the building. The pieces that we are highlighting are some of those highlighted in the July board meeting in terms of the alternates and the basements. And so, um, we talked about a lot of stuff in that July meeting. So this is really gonna hone in on some of those pieces that might have multiple different endings in the construction project. So really, it's just kind of like deepen the understanding of different parts, where things are moving, things like that. Um, hopefully, we'll establish a common language in terms of base bid, alternates, and know what we're all talking about. And we'll continue to use some of this language as we go through some of these meetings. At the end, we will review the timeline and hopefully get some clarification on any questions or things that, you know, seem unclear or you have questions about as we do the tour. So today, we are not talking about anything related to cost, budgets. We're not voting on anything. It's just dialogue discussion. So, um, basically, the structure I would like to see for today is really, um, kind of keep the the formal meeting structure. Whereas we're starting in here, we will move through the tour, Leno will leave. And when we come back, that's when I'd like to see the discussion. So please ask questions during the tour that are more cohesive, like clarifying questions. What doesn't make sense? Um, what, if, you know, did you not hear, what have you? Um, yes, no, kind of short answer questions. And then anything open ended, or why did you do this, or why is that that? Um, I'd like that to come back here so that it's on record and you're having the discussion as a whole group. Uh, so that's kind of basically what that says. So we have a tight timeline. So if you could hold, you know, try to limit any side conversations, um, we're gonna try to move through a lot of different spaces, um, pretty quickly. So just a quick preview. So first stop is going to be right outside the store. We'll hit some of the highlights in the nurses' office, the kitchen and boiler rooms existing. We're gonna venture down the hallway to the student bathrooms on the corner. We're gonna make a left down the hallway and look at classrooms, what's happening in the classrooms, what's happening in the existing library. And then we're gonna head all the way down the hall to look at those large, we continue to call that the former kindergarten rooms, even though kindergarten is not here anymore, they're still known as kindergarten rooms. Uh, we'll look at those spaces and then we'll head out that back door to look at where that outdoor classroom is set, to, um, look B and on the asphalt areas. And we'll come around the back of the building and then head back inside. We got umbrellas for everyone.
Which, uh?
And literally, it's a sidewalk walk, so it should be quick. It's really again, just to get eyes on those pieces, those are alternates. So, um, to get eyes on those pieces in terms of what is going to be here maybe and what is going to get replaced. So you don't need to be outside long. It'll be a quick sidewalk walk from the side door to the back. Hopefully, the rain will hold up. So again, language and look force. So base bid, I'm taking for granted that, you know, everybody's learning along with me. So forgive me if you already know this, um, language very well. Um, so base bid is just the base amount for the work to be completed. So every piece of this project has got a base bid. It's the base amount. Um, so some of the things that I, we're gonna highlight and talk about is the flooring, because that is a base bid flooring. And then there's an alternate flooring and the asphalt, same thing. We have a base bid for the existing asphalt and a base bid for replacing the asphalt. Alternate bids, so these are bids separately from the base bid. And that, again, we kind of talked about this in July, but the highlight there is that it provides us options. So we will get different prices for different things because we've got alternate bids. So again, the flooring, the asphalt, library finishes, um, are base bid. Baseline finishes and then some upgraded finishes. And then the outdoor classroom, that whole piece without this base bid, the classroom is an alternate. So we'll be able to exactly see exactly what that costs. And then the movable wall, we'll talk a little bit about where that might go. That is an alternate, um, bid. Okay, questions so far? Um, some of the other things is that these drawings, I wanted to give you a visual of kind of what it looks like on the drawings. They're very technical. There's several pages, some of them are electrical drawings. So the important piece, I think, in the in the tour is like more of listening and looking rather than trying to understand like every little arrow in piece of the drawing. The drawing really was just to give you some reference when we walk into the spaces. Try to give you as much, um, visual as possible instead of us just talking words. So that is the goal. Okay, any questions before we hit it? Okay?
Right, right, let's swing a bit.
Um, the date of opening is September twenty eighth. We will have an operations committee meeting on October tenth. We will review the bids. I think those will still be reviewing them, but, um, we'll give you an idea where they are. We'll bring the bids back and then give you a chance to ask questions with the operations committee. Uh, we will bring the bids back to the board meeting on the seventeenth. To have more questions, there'll be a November seventh operations committee meeting, final bid review, and we will, um, do do an action. At the November fourteenth board meeting, we'll have a bid for words action. We'll also bring, um, stuff that you may have been in your group with at the November operations committee meeting. Okay, so now there are, there's twelve answer questions for discussion.
Okay, I want to apologize to you guys for that rush. I mean, of course, we loved to tour the entire building and point out everything. We were just trying to be very, um, purposeful. Mind some of the pieces relating to the project.
I'll kick it off. Why the bathroom didn't consider this small? Girls go from seven toilets to five. Boys go from five roomers and three toilets to two roomers and three toilets.
So they, we had to make it A D A compatible and the A D A takes that home.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the tour. That was a great way to, you know, score a good way to visualize things. I guess. Um, what is the lifespan to a good flooring life that's like?
Uh, about twenty years. So it's close to giving it its lifespan.
Why is all the teaching walls in there also? Um, what's the study, what's the, um, gap on my notes?
They wanted to make the, um, classroom system be the same in every classroom. So they picked a front of that wall and because the student doors, you know, the door would be open, there could be people going by. Um, it was not that the back of the classroom would be a better spot to put it. And we had to move it anyway. We had to change it anyways, so it was one way or the other.
I just respect that you don't, I don't understand the mind. It was always a thing with fun and fashion and the country together, fun and fashion. So that I had a space where the gap between the fun and fashion could keep in some sense of the pattern and the fun. Trying to make things consistent. Who wanted it to be consistent with the teachers holding?
The teachers, yes.
Maybe it is that they probably have a, you know.
Well, the back is a new front, right? Everybody's collecting on. So really, it's just the enter and the exit is now in the back of the room instead of right in the front. Right where the teacher, so the whole class is facing the back. Oh, like the door. Yes.
And still say where it is.
Yes.
And the rationale was, it's coming back from the students. And that's the whole nine to the end. But in this day and age with safety, I would think it would be better if the teacher saw something happen. She was in the back, she knew the back. The times and certainly, like, teacher, teacher. And the teacher's like, shh, not teaching.
Well, the door should be locked. The door should be done, it's locked anyway.
I think we'll take this one, we'll turn it over after this split. Yeah, it's like both my daughters, like, they're always passionate. So, um, I, I have, I have a lot of questions, but, um... No, I guess that is my question. Do you have plans to discuss with another, who will be discussing with them at where they're late in our next meeting?
Well, so according to the timeline, the next meeting is operations meeting. So a lot of this work is now gonna get over to do the work of the operations team, like that, that's their job. Um, so we can collect questions and funnel through that meeting and get them back. Um, but there is also two board meetings once the prices come in. So I don't know if they do the cost or just general design and, you know, questions, but...
My questions are general design concerns or just items that I'm just a little bit unsure about. Um, like I get all the, I know, it's like, I, I like numerous pieces, I like the wood additions. And utilize space that wasn't before, so there are a lot of things that I like those items. Um, like for the flooring, do, or we will have, we have remediation or maybe if we do drive the flooring, like, do we need to worry about? Discuss that for everything else and is the thing that's the appropriate time, right? Or do we?
Uh, yes, we already did that on Thursday morning. When this wall was put in, yes.
So this was the same?
Yes, there's a little bit of this, that's just maybe around the units and some of the areas, but nothing, nothing significant.
Okay, and then, um, like, I, I really don't know if I can spend, still having a hard time grasping the transfer of the current L R C to a new place where we're asking for it. And I guess, I'm just a little bit hesitant because I feel like a lot of the items are not necessary. So, sorry, after you come back to me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna sort of like incorporate questioning, but...
Anybody else?
Yes, I had a question. Um, again, just a question on the floor. Are you stating if you're putting in, if you were to put a floor, then the floor is a carpet kind of connected? I see that one for a trail.
Yes, yes, carpet part will be, it is a for a trail. And then there'll be a similar type material for where they're all on the tile as well.
So for the L R C renovation, if it doesn't get moved into the, or kindergarten classrooms, is it a goal as a policy? Is there a base L R C renovation plan in the current space or just the remaining classes?
So I think, you know, Karen has some flexibility in terms of how she wants to use the different spaces. So certainly, she can limit where, where this right now, um, or can be moved down to that classroom. Taking up the walls and taking up new beds really has no bearing on where the library is. If that makes sense. Because it's fitting in the existing space right now. Um, she will be too, too stupid there and keep, you know, open up the other area and put the fresh light bricks in there, um, or she could put up.
So, all right, I guess back to my question. In, in the proposal, I think what we said was a million dollar L R C, which I would assume would be real kindergarten classroom, that would be the million dollar. And if you didn't do that, would you just keep the walls there and the classroom as is?
We're, we're not recommending keeping that wall there because once you tear out the bathroom, it really doesn't make sense to have a wall there. And it's more flexible for the school to leave that wall taken out. So base bid has that wall taken out. The expensive L R C had a couple of side classrooms in, like, small classrooms in it and some nicer finishes, finishes make it look like a nicer way there. That's the ultimate. But the, the base bid just has, because we haven't taken out those bathrooms, it has that wall taken out because it provides a more flexible space. It can be either special or be a better.
I felt tired in the conversation that July was, once it became a whole library, the new library could also become a community.
That's a possibility. If the school wants, wants to have, you know, parents come for P T C meetings and a pair of nights and other kinds of community. It's that kind of community, it's not necessarily just open to all the community. It's, it's school oriented events with their parents and, um, whatever.
So, so if we go ahead and convert that, which is a library, it just automatically defaults to a community?
Um, well, not necessarily. They use this for the community units or the gym.
Well, let's be realistic. What they said in July, they want to use that as a community. So what will happen is it needs approval, approve that, it will cannot be a community.
And that means, community doesn't mean, I mean, it's, it becomes a nice space where P T C can meet. P T C meets in the library, I can tell. It means a nice, makes a nice place where it means that everyone's at night. Um, you know, if they're having ice cream social, it's probably outside, depending on what.
Down the original proposal, also had exterior doors, which sometimes would have to be approved for it to be a community door.
I mean, it was a convenient place to have parents and other people come in because there are outside doors on this place. It doesn't, we don't have to do that, we can come. We can continue, they can continue to join the school the way they want.
Anybody else? Screen look back to, screen now.
No, I mean, I just, I think it's, I think it's something that's hard to advise what to do because obviously, we are not professionals that are gone to school to study this or are engineers. But like, in my mind, I just, I don't really understand the conversion of the kindergarten rooms. I feel like we, so I've got this subfield, so it's a thinking because I'm not trained in this department. But like, I just feel like we could probably do this in a much simpler way than having to, to really do it really.
Well, part of the, part of the issue is we need more staff bathrooms, we do not need co. And that becomes a very convenient place, easy, less expensive place to put bathrooms because of the zone you're calling it now.
Right, I understand, but I mean, I can't reach to put the, can't we just literally take the bathrooms that are shown here and just move them to the, like, why did?
It'll cost just as, it'll cost just as much because that can, if we were in a, um, you have to be A D A compatible, we have to fit a staff member in it, then the staff member will be.
I guess, I guess that, but doesn't this like, but this involves like extending or like the plumbing?
So, actually, we're, it's like, it's a time of doubt. We, if we're done designing, everything's out with it. So the next, the next big step is looking at the costs of everything. Like, we have these discussions every week, inside and out, move the bathrooms here, move them there, move them there. So the design is done and, um, that we wanted to really point out some of these things because we're gonna be looking at costs related to fancy library fixtures, no fancy library fixtures, flooring, no flooring. So we wanted to point out some of those specific pieces so that we can actually have the costs. We can make better decisions about the design, but we are past our design.
Thank you for the idea.
No problem.
Anybody else? Okay, now let her take a motion a second to adjourn the regular board of education meeting, uh, committee as a whole at seven o'clock.
So?
Second.
Moved by Freeman, second by Fisher. Please call board.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Monsieur?
Yes.
Marrow?
Yes.
I will, yes, Rupi?
Yes.
Being key?
Yes.
So we, we'll take a few, yeah, we'll take a three minute break before we get started.
That I know.
Okay, let me follow this. September nineteen twenty twenty three, Bourbon Trail School District Twenty Six Board of Education regular meeting to order at seven oh seven. As a reminder, please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Uh, please join me to plead allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We present our product for both states, one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all. Mrs. Jackson, please call board.
Being key?
Here.
Marrow?
Here.
Freeman here. Rupi?
Here.
I am here, Fisher?
Here.
And Monsieur?
Here.
You have four.
Thank you. Okay, let me go over the consent agenda. Are there any items that a member would like to remove or further discuss or has a question of clarification? I wanted to comment on the travel expenses. All right, okay, I'll just say that I thoroughly looked over the travel expenses to D C. I know that they've processed them out there, but I want to thank the administration for, um, just to steward this, uh, the funds and, um, economical accommodations to celebrate their efforts. So kind of wraps, puts a nice bow on the board. Great point, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion a second to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. I ask for, and it includes the following. Board of Education meeting minutes for August fifteenth. Board of Education meeting minutes for August thirtieth. Board of Education closed meeting minutes, August thirtieth. Personnel report, the actual carols, bills, and checks. Travel report, declassification, closed session minutes, destruction of reverberating tapes, E I S administrator and teacher salary benefit report, fiscal year twenty three site based expenditure report, and the policy packet one twelve. So?
Second.
Moved by Marrow, second by Rupi. Being key, thank you. Please call board.
Monsieur?
Yes.
Rupi?
Yes.
Freeman, yes. Fisher?
Yes.
I will, yes, Marrow?
Yes.
And Being key?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next up is R T A comments. You had it before, so.
I'm the end for the R T A executive board and the entire membership. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the administration for a wonderful and working relationship. I'm happy to announce that I found individuals, um, to join the board in our Coffee with the Board initiative. And, um, I'm gonna get in touch with Patty about dates. In my mind, the date that makes the most sense is the date of the board meeting at around five thirty P M to have two individuals from the board, they have coffee and pie or what have you, sandwiches, with, uh, two individuals from our executive committee, um, and to discuss topics and just get to know each other and get to know the, uh, the way the district is from the side of the board and the boys. Thank you.
It's a great idea, I look forward to it. Okay, the timeline, we're recognizing any members of the audience who approach the board with their common or question by completing a visitor's comment card. Please do note that the board and administration typically does not respond. And if you wish for a response, please provide your name and number or email for a member of the board or administration to get back to you. Speakers are encouraged to limit their time for others to participate in the three minute time of the per speaker with an overall sixty minute maximum for visitor's comments. Majority of the board can vote to extend time as deemed appropriate. So any visitor's comments. Okay, we're enough, we'll move forward to board communications, you know, the agenda for all board members. Anyone have anything they'd like to share with the rest of the board?
Thank you after attending all the open houses. I just wanna say that our staff was absolutely amazing and everything went really well. Um, there's a lot of information passed out and it's, it's just always amazing to see people at that type of night after working on things and still have smiles on their face. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll free that again too. We're, we're really great.
I'd like to actually piggyback on that. So at the Indian Grove, as a parent, at the Indian Grove Open House, they did, uh, have a sit in gym, which was not air conditioned, it was a very hot day. Uh, so I applaud them for being able to kind of improvise. And Mr. Timmons had a recorded message that the teachers all played before they went into their own, uh, which feels. So, uh, I just want to commend them for, I think, thinking ahead and thinking outside the box and kind of telling that, um, that it'll be then have a signal and then hatchet, so I applaud them for their efforts. Anybody else? What?
I did want to add that as well, um, me and my parent at the Bourbon Trails, um, Open House was amazing. Uh, we had a lot of comments just from parents walking around the building. Um, just, um, didn't do any exciting things at the gym, or do a lot of really positive comments on the staff as a whole. So I did want to say thank you in particular, um, for, for just the, the effort that the teachers put into that. It was really amazing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one more item. Uh, just be aware of P T C activities. Uh, there were, we already had one ice cream social and there are a lot of food, um, with that guy named Share. Is that what you're called? To support the P T C. So, um, we, we've done a couple and which is always going to become, for example, the Bourbon Trails, um, using boosters that now covers the entire district. Um, so always be the concern of the community. And I, and you, you're great.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
One event that I attended last year that they're eating at Bourbon Trails, I believe it's this Friday. There, it's a great musical performance, so if you have any littles, I think that would be really welcome. It's a great, but kids are doing some crafts, playing playground, and it's just really nice, so I recommend it.
Okay, moving on, this is recognition, this is, you have four, this is for our great room.
We have a lot of guests here.
Right, we have a number of guests. federal government. Uh, the reason that uh they do this award and they do it in schools is because they want to prepare global leaders. Uh, also, they want, it helps to deepen relations with faculty, students, and the community. Uh, saves dollars, the energy savings uh can then go into the classroom to provide better education for our students, gives us some some positive P R. Um, this kind of learning is applied learning, learning, there's STEM, problem-based learning, outdoor education. Uh, it also shows the students green career paths and leads to some civic values. So what is involved? Well, there are three pillars of school sustainability. I think most of you think about the first pillar, which is reduced environmental impact and costs. And Prairie Trail School was a great example of that. Uh, it's the first uh in the nation net zero energy school that was renovated means uh via uh which is Path of House Institute um certification, which means it's forty to sixty percent um more energy efficient than most buildings. It's an all-electric building. We also have an electric school bus, so there are no fossil fuels, except in the cars you drive, at this building. Uh, we also have a permeable pavement parking lot, uh alleviates flooding in the neighborhood. So it's, we're giving back to our community also. But I want you to look at that second pillar, because there is much more to this award. And the second pillar focuses on improving health and wellness uh for our schools, our students, and our staff. Um, our new heating and air conditioning system um delivers fresh air, it's filtered, it's humidity controlled, so it provides a better environment in the classroom. Uh, the natural playground gives all the students a place to run around and explore the outdoors. And it also is a place where the teachers have been able to help outside classes. They do music classes there, they read that stories, they play it in little gardens. They have a, I believe it's a three really goat rough um story that they hide in a little uh uh little, I don't know, Jacobi's Cave that they have there. Um, and they can study uh the weather, plants, and a lot of things there. Another thing that makes this a healthy and well school is our nutritious lunch and breakfast program. We serve a variety of fruits and vegetables. And I have Kelly Diaz there. She is uh doing more food from scratch and more healthy food also. Um, and another area is our focus on wellness. Um, the teachers and the teacher assistants uh make that a priority. We also have a number of support staff, like social workers, psychologists, speech pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists. Uh, so there's a lot going on there. So that's the second pillar. And it's thanks to the staff that this second pillar is there. And then we made that second pillar. The third pillar is effective environmental and sustainability education. This one goes to the staff too. Because of the staff at Prairie Trails, the kindergarten students learn how the earth supports life and how we need to treat the earth well so it can give back to us. They take STEAM classes, they have units on plants, the weather, animals, uh forest forces, lotion, and a variety of other activities. Uh, if you've been in the building, which I think you all have, it itself is a teaching tool with all the displays that are in there. Uh, we bring the uh middle school students over there and our architect, our construction manager, our buildings and grounds facilitator, um talk to them about how the building was constructed, how they keep maintaining it. And they also, this is where the green careers come in, because they talk to the students about the possibility of green careers in their fields. So that's kind of just a basic overview. There was a lot more that I went into this. Uh, but if it wasn't for everyone, including we have our construction manager, our architect, our solar panels, our superintendent Nancy, and I wanted to just people, staff at Prairie Trails, uh administrators at Prairie Trails. If it wasn't for them, we would not have been able to give this award. So thank you to all. Um, we have a little recognition and then uh have you come up and get a a nice little pen for to recognition. And this is, Patty's gonna play the uh video from when we actually got the award.
Illinois. I'm thinking Anne Christie of the Illinois State Board of Education. And we have Prairie Trail School in our prospect, Illinois. Prairie Trail School completed major renovations in twenty twenty-one, making it a net zero energy school. The building's solar panels offset one hundred percent of the school's electric needs. The school emphasizes resource conservation with strategies including using compostable trees and composting kitchen food scraps. The playground built using displaced soil from renovation project promotes cognitive, emotional, and physical growth while supporting an integrated curriculum and provides teachers with an outdoor teaching environment. Prairie Trail School's site serves as a learning hub for environmental sustainability for the school district's older students as well. Hot Lincoln Medical School District one fifty-eight in our concrete, Illinois.
Okay, so um I guess I'll I'll just call up the people we could see uh who's here. Um, we have Nancy Wagner. Just I'll come up here and then I'll give you all the pen. Was the superintendent who we did this. Um, Sue Hoffman was the technology director. Uh, Amy Batesman is the principal of the school. Jared Hudson is the assistant principal. Uh, Kristy Seifer uh helped work on the educational and environmental literacy department. Uh, then we have uh our construction team. We have Troy Kerr, who's an architect, Lauren Richardson, an architect, David Torres, who's taking the film. Uh, he's our construction manager. Jared Raftery, uh worked on the solar panels. Um, I believe in uh Bob Bob Castner was uh helped with what helps with all the technology and union and supported these two. So um, look, we have, oh, ouch, oh, damn, he disappeared. And that's part of the deadness. The director. And there were some of our board members that were part of this team too. They helped improve this and give this score. So I believe, um, Robert, you were on the board, uh Phil, Janine, uh Donna, of course, um Lewis, and Joey started working on it too. So it's a big team and thank you all absolutely.
So we do have some refreshments. Please help yourself, or we can mingle a little bit. So take about a fifteen minute break. Uh, and we will resume at seven forty. Okay, we missed all that chutzpah. Let's thank Linda for all of her efforts to get the uh.
I tried to make it to the mic before Bill went into a great condition. I didn't hear that.
So we'll jump into uh new business, which is business services and student enrollment update. Linda, that dish.
Okay, student enrollment will share. I've got uh we are at one fourteen ninety-nine, almost fifteen hundred students. Uh, it's pretty close to what I had imagined, but there there were some changes within the grade levels. Kindergarten in particular. Um, I have been using the conference forecast at one forty-seven, though we did not stack for that. We stacked for the the one one forty. Uh, we're actually at one twenty-nine in annual guidance forecast, which shows one thirty for uh kindergarten. Uh, all the other grade levels were actually up a few skills. Um, all the way along, so it kind of made up for, and of course, many of the kindergartners.
You couldn't find one kid walking the street to get to just the fifteen hundred?
I should, we will. We don't have to report the actual enrollment until September the third. So probably three down and one more child. We're going to have fourteen hundred people.
Thank you for the updates. Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on, we'll move into committee reports. N S S C O, Mr. Ronson, you are our representative.
Okay, we have a second quarter meeting that was presented last week. Um, we got uh a lack of none with uh Bill Mann coming in as the new superintendent. Um, we are happy to report fully staff, uh which is a great accomplishment, uh once again, with the uh handling of the support staff in particular. Um, and uh we are working diligently on the facilities committee uh to review the portfolio of properties and uh improvements that we made across the different quarters. Um, so we had a way for them to go through it to an inventory, to certain kind of price kind of stuff we're doing. Um, but it's uh it's going to take a process to to figure all that out. Kind of same thing where we've gone through. Um, but we've definitely got some needs over there at uh those schools as well. There's also some larger strategic planning that uh needs to um to 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 be worked through. Um, yeah, yeah, that's uh kind of gets started with your um.
Next up is the uh benefits committee. Johnson, you are our representative.
Um, every year, um, our health insurance company rebates a certain amount of money based on how many wellness challenges and points that our teachers and staff accumulate. And so on the one flyer you see there is about one, two, three, four, five. There's seven activities that staff can participate in. There's a number of points that are awarded to each staff member when they are successful at that challenge. And then we reach all those numbers, which is something like, what is it, some kind of, um, two, three, three seventy-five. If we reach that, we get a certain percentage back from our premiums. And every year it's been right around twenty thousand dollars. So what we do with that money is we give it back to the staff. And the way we do it is we give them a stipend based on how many points that staff member uh obtained. So if a staff member obtains three hundred points, they get a hundred fifty dollars. If they obtain two hundred points, they get seventy-five dollars. And I don't know, it's usually all that, that's what they do. And then we, all the payroll taxes, et cetera, are also taken out, as required by the I R S. So um, it's a very well-established program. The insurance company likes us because our staff is happy and forced everyone to participate in. Um, it doesn't hurt as much if people move on. So that's the, oh, we have a recommendation. Should I? Okay. So the benefits committee recommended for myself as a member of the benefits committee recommends an employee stipend of a hundred fifty dollars beginning from obtaining three hundred points, seventy-five dollars for two hundred points out of three and seventy-five on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three total wellness challenge. Motion.
Second.
Moved by Ronson, second by Fister. Any questions or comments?
Can I just request that we get a report once this was settled on what was actually uh just what we made out, like in the year versus the first of the budget? That's something you're allowed to, that could I request?
Uh, I mean, that don't hap- doesn't happen to the very end of the year, but yes, we have, we do, you're definitely.
Okay, can you provide that to the board as well?
Uh, yes, you can see my asterisk if that would be helpful. Cause you won't be able to see this year. It'll be later June when you'll be able to see this just.
I know, I understand. I'm just asking you to make sure that's included in the report.
And that's something we can do. Like, are we allowed, but we just make sure, are we allowed to say, you know, Mrs. X got this much money?
No, you just say how much we could spend.
Just a total?
I just want to make sure I got your request.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're approving twenty thousand dollars and it's a tiered system. Sure. So I I don't know what percentage of people are going to hit the top two versus the lower tier. You don't want to break out by person yourself.
Okay, okay, I totally agree. We do a total of management. Yeah, totally agree. Okay. And in comparison to the budget or to, I can protect.
Yes, I can. Yes, we have that intention.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, did you take rollings?
Being key?
Yes.
Fister?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Ronstad?
Yes.
Freeman, yes. Marco, yes, and Marco.
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, next up is the president's report. Upcoming events are on the twenty-second, we've got that Prairie Trail, the family out of concert. The twenty-fifth is a non-attended date for all students and staff. Uh, September twenty-seventh is our next board meeting with the board. Uh, here at U G L from five to six. Uh, October tenth, operations committee meeting. Uh, Robert here to share that with uh Kimberly and myself with you. The thirteenth of October, we have the P T C family pizza night. Uh, which P T C is that? Vol?
Is it on October?
October thirteenth.
I believe it's in January.
In April, okay. How is that? Check your calendar. That our half-quarter of education meeting is on October seventeen. It will be at the middle school at the L C at seven P M. And I just want to thank everybody for your participation in our board retreat. I thought it went really pretty well. Uh, I appreciate everybody's uh opinions and respect for everybody else's opinions. Uh, I just personally talked it a lot well, so I appreciate your participation. And next up is our superintendent's report, Dr. Gregory Thibodeau. Did you notice September thirteen, that the U G P T C?
That's what I asked. Becky thinks it's in April.
Because it might be available to the board. Just one more right there. Ruby?
I just go back to the chat.
No problem. We'll get back to it. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, first want to see, going back to board protocols, um, seeing if you guys had any questions or comments about the format, because we've kind of took all of that and and put some edits there together. Any questions about the new format or edits or changes? Um, because we would bring that back for votes next meeting. Okay.
The only, the only question I had is about, do you agree that there's protocols? We're just gonna always call these board protocols? Technically, like, we're good.
That's what I heard at the training, but I guess.
No, I agree. Yes, so this is all.
You agree that we're calling them protocols?
Yeah, I agree that they are calling them protocols. Okay, so just a mention that um those are always just designated the same way. That's it.
Okay.
Um, the next two pieces were pieces that we actually did not get to in the training, so that would be during open session. Um, there weren't really anything um major that I would propose in terms of changes, but there were some things on the protocols that were more like superintendent actions that I thought that would fit better as superintendent expectations. Um, so if you kind of look at the notes, um, number two. No problem, we'll get back to you. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, a couple of things. First, want to see, going back to the board protocols. Seeing if you guys had any questions or comments about the format, because we kind of took all of that and put some edits there together. Any questions about the new format or edits or changes, because we would bring that back for votes next dating. Okay.
The only, the only question I had is about, do you agree that there's protocols? We're just gonna always call these world protocols?
That's what I heard at the training, but I guess-
No, I agree, yes, yes, so this is why we're calling-
You agree that we're calling them protocols?
Yeah, I agree that they are calling them protocols. Okay, so just a question that, um, those are always just designated the same way, that's it.
Okay. Um, the next two pieces were pieces that we actually did not get to in the training, so that would be during open session. There weren't really anything, um, major that I would propose in terms of changes, but there were some things on the protocols that were more like superintendent actions that I thought that would fit better as superintendent expectations. So if you kind of look at the notes, number two F, take it off of board protocol because it's a superintendent expectation, and number three, same thing. You guys, okay, if I continue in that format, you good there? Okay. Um, so we're not, it's not, it's just shifting over to a superintendent expectation. Um, number eight is just a repeat, so it's already a board protocol, so it's just kind of taking out the redundancy. You've got it in two different places. It's more of a board protocol, I have to say, sorry, anybody? Um, okay, so, new number nine, this is about, um, the board, like, it's the V O E address. You all get those? When somebody from the community sends an email to that address?
When I give one, when I give one, I set it up.
So you're the only one that gets it?
And I don't get it often.
Okay, um, so I don't-
It's our request, not our thing.
And I don't know if that didn't, like, are those supposed to come in the protocols? If that's the way that it's written, okay. So, um, so that just needs rewording, because I don't get emails, so I've got to take myself out and we'll just reword it to reflect the current practice that you've formed with all of them. Okay, so new number eleven. Yeah, so that, um, that's the board president, or does me being the superintendent review all board agendas? So that's something that's been in existence. I didn't know, I mean, obviously I inherited, I knew that when I moved in because of dancing, but it's not from anywhere, so that's something I would get super long, written as an expectation. Okay? And then, um, new number twelve is, um, basically, it's a superintendent expectation, so it's just try and forget. It's not really anything you guys are doing. It's me making sure my team is putting things on as a discussion I did first before it's an extra. Okay? Everybody's good with that? So who are we those forward? A clean copy to go on also next month, okay? All right, next big ticket item is, um, the hiring timeline for assistant superintendent of business services. So that is exciting. Um, you can see, um, my plan is to post the position Monday, October second. And really cover a variety of, of different areas. Obviously, the professional business organizations, IASO, um, you know, the K P L drop spot, which is pretty much a given frontline, I A S A, and, um, I will see if there's any other places that I'm missing from some of the people I know that do search firms, um, that searches. So I'd like to keep that up for about five weeks, so during that time, I'll begin paper screening, recruiting, you know, word of mouth, and making sure that we're sharing the job description and that that job is posted when we go and partner at meetings and things like that. And really just prep for interviews, making, um, creating teams and getting the questions in order. I'm also, I asked Stephanie to kind of come up with a one-page vacancy, like, who is rumor trails, um, to go along with the regular job posting, because, you know, I'm sure everybody doesn't know everything about rumor trails, but just to kind of talk a little bit about the community, what are some things close by, here's some things, you know, about the school district, and what we're looking for. So we're kind of working through that. In-person interviews, um, early November, um, kind of, you know, rolling reference checks. I'd like to basically be ready, ready to have an offer and kind of negotiate, um, early December, so that I can bring somebody to the board on December ninth. Crazy. Uh, one thing I just want to add or kind of bring up as the first round of conversation is salary for this position. So, um, you know, looking at local districts, looking at, um, experience, you know, I'm just gonna pitch out a range from my early research. I'm looking at anything from the lower end of the salary range, like one thirty-five, one forty, all the way up to about like one seventy-five, one eighty, which is really still, um, that higher range is still within like that lower twenty-fifth percentile of salaries, I would say, in this area. I think, um, you know, obviously I'm looking for somebody to come in and take on the things that we are working on and be prepared to cover the areas that the little is covering. If I was looking for somebody, uh, super green, definitely could have time to grow, I probably will be in that bottom range, but I'm thinking realistically, I, I, it's probably gonna be more around like the one fifty, the one seventy-five range, hoping that somebody has some experience to come in. Uh, so just wanted to put that out there early on. I don't want to spend, you know, three months on a job search and then I'll lose my candidate at the end over something like this. So, wanted to put it out there and wanted to see if anybody had any thoughts. Um, either way, because again, don't want to get to December and, and anybody we have feedback for, please surprise.
Agreed with the range, so you go forward, just use corporate judgment, the compensation is commensurate with the right. When would you target them to start? Would you want that, would this candidate to work with them though, to kind of shadow or?
Well, um, I'm, I'm the only person doing the job, so the whole, the whole premise of getting them hired, um, by December so that they can, you know, start the year with a shadow plan. Um, like, when I transitioned over, I was hired earlier before I went to break, so I used personal days, I used some time off. I came to a key meetings, I started meeting people, and I think the longer they have to transition, um, the more the, the better. So that's the whole, that's the whole thought process behind, um, you know, really kind of starting in there. I mean, fortunately, a lot of meetings are Zoom, so it'd be nice now for somebody to transition. They could take construction meetings from their office instead of having to come to the district. So we'll kind of work on that, that transition plan once we get that person established.
We need, in the past, the, the, uh, practical when it comes to compensation. So it's a good process, like, if I were a candidate, if I made a, 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 a choice, I'd kind of surprise you that I'm not gonna prove just anything.
And, you know, that's kind of what I've been doing, like, as I'm screening, which is what I'm seeing, and, you know, I'm trying to narrow that, but again, just opening the door early on to give us a starting point.
Anybody else?
And, and really just wanted to kind of wrap up my report by highlighting just the start of school, the last time we met. I can't believe that school had started yet, because it feels like we've been in school now for, for months. It's like you picked up like where you left off. Um, but, you know, I would echo some of the great things, um, in my, my tours and kind of popping around. The first day, the second day, the first week, um, the staff are recording a super smooth start with the kids, um, transitioning in very well. Uh, smooth start from the administrative lens, um, open houses were really great. I mean, the energy of the families, just seeing each other and saying hello, and it was so much greater than G and M buildings. And, you know, I want to thank the board members too for coming to the open houses and handing out flyers for the group with the board. I thought that we were super, like, so much more engaged with the, the families than last year, and, you know, that's really the whole premise of it. But, um, activities are starting, and even with some of the struggles that we had at district office with transportation, I think that, um, overall, it's, it's been a, it's been a really good start so far. So, just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you for the report. Last chance, any questions from the board? Okay, we have four year requests. Thank you, Patty. Appreciate you taking care of that. Uh, future topics, we do have a triple I conference, November seventeenth to the nineteenth. We have a board get-together dinner on Saturday, uh, at four thirty at the Palmon's Swiss Hotel. Uh, also, as you're putting your calendar together, uh, I'm gonna be co-leading one of the sessions on Saturday, November eighteenth, from three to four, in the Hyatt at the Roosevelt Room. It's just about, it's the group that I've mentioned here at our, our meeting that I meet with a bunch of board presidents and how we network. Uh, but if you've got time in your schedule and you'd like to attend, I'd love to see some familiar faces out there. Uh, I'll talk about that for you. Uh, the other thing that I have for a future topic is... So I attended the open house at Percy, because my daughter now goes there. Um, and they went over, uh, attendance, uh, figures, and there was a lot of gasp from the crowd. And I, I literally took notice of that, that, um, to have the parents see the charts and the facts and figures that they put up was very impactful, uh, and helps them determine, hopefully it impacts the choices that they make for their students for the upcoming school year. Uh, so what I'd like to do, uh, at least make as a future topic for open house next year, is to have our principals report on the same thing as district-wide. Uh, I wouldn't want to break it out by school, because if the figures, uh, show that one school is better or one school is, I won't say better, but it's more of an issue at one school, I don't want people then dismiss it and just say, oh, that's an Indian River problem, or that's a PTC problem, I mean, a prayer trail problem. So I'd like to report out our attendance figures as a district to show the parents, again, the, 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 the impact that their decisions make on their students' education. So I did, uh, pardon my crappy printer, but I did print the, uh, slides that Percy, uh, put out. So these are the slides that they presented. I contacted their principal through their superintendent, uh, to get, to get their facts and figures. And we, this isn't something I want to review here, but I just want to show you that this is what they showed, because it doesn't all, we, we couldn't use this verbatim. We don't necessarily, you know, complicate it, you know, for everybody. Uh, but again, this was what was shown, and as you can see, there's a, uh, just how the cuts were increasing year after year. There was a nice decrease for twenty twenty-three as opposed to twenty twenty-two. But it was just, again, something that I, that was very impactful, again, it did, uh, Christie, I want to call you up, and I know you were at open house. I don't know if you were in the gym at the time. But again, it just, you could really see the, the, the impact of, of, of the, the parents' decisions to keep their kid home and how it affects their grades. We don't necessarily have the median C or grade point average, so again, not all these slides are gonna be verbatim or copied verbatim by us, but I'd like to mold this in a way that would fit District Twenty-Six, so that we can show our parents. And again, if we showed the same presentation at any school, then we're, we're speaking with one voice, and, and we're collectively reporting this out. And, you know, who knows? I don't, I, the sky kind of, uh, grandiose thought, but if we can impact kids attendance here at the elementary school level, then maybe it won't be so bad for Percy going forward. Who knows? Uh, but it, it's gotta start somewhere. So that is a future topic that I am proposing.
I would just like to caution, since my kids went to Mercy and, and finished over there, which was scheduled on the days that my grandson was absent. It was four different, uh, course, he was marked absent four times to that day instead of one time for the day. So if my child was absent for three days, he had twelve absences in a matter of three days. So I just want to caution you that when we're, when we're asking for this information, that you keep in mind that when we are here, I'll do this.
Correct, what we, what we might define as excessive tardiness may not be what they would define.
Or, so I just-
I totally agree with you. I completely understand your comfort zone, but I don't, totally, absolutely.
I think I would support looking at it, but also with a heavy dose of, if your child was sick, staying home, like, we're not, like, we want kids to be at school when they're healthy and-
Sure, it's a mixed bag. I mean, obviously sickness is happening, you know?
And in the last couple of years, I mean, it did go down, you know, so.
But we also can't be naive to think that our parents aren't there, or like, well, you know, it's cheaper to go to Disneyland than-
I mean, that was-
It's September or October, or, you know, whatever, I don't know, it's cheaper. And maybe it's not, but I'm just saying.
I just, uh, want to kind of echo what you had said when we, when these figures, it was very impactful as a parent, thinking, oh, if there have been times that I've done that, or, you know, have I been a little bit lenient? I think also it was very impactful is, um, just seeing the impact that it made, the impact that we put here also gives statistical data on what those increases caused to start with GPA. So again, I understand what you're saying about, you know, being realistic and what really what that absentee was, it was one day set up for. But then also just making the basic point that your child's attendance will impact their overall performance in school. If, you know, it's, it's a key factor, I think it was, was extremely impactful.
I mean-
Go ahead.
I would like to also bring up that, I guess, if you're just trying to do this exercise to who GPA is tied with absences, we have to have something, I don't know, maybe an incentive of some sort for families to keep their kids in school and not take modifications and cruises and, you know, over Europe. In the past, a long, long time ago, we used to disallow students who were absent, which was a pain in the butt for a parent, because then they have to rework it, get, present all the information. It was also a pain for the administration. But nonetheless, I don't know if that's something we want to look into, if we want to still do it.
Well, I think if we see the figures, if we see that there is, you know, really horrible cruelty issue, that maybe is something we, as a district, decide to-
But you have to figure out where the absence is coming from. It's coming because they're sick, or it's coming because they're going on cruise. You have to kind of, you know, you have to separate that out, I would think.
When we get, when we take a, an excuse from the parents, from getting, is it like a code or something, to capture the reason?
I know Percy did. He goes, I called in, I had to tell him why.
That's the point, and death in the family, I don't, I don't know where the line is or what you can ask, but, you know, it would be interesting. I heard that this fucking data, but also, I, my parents don't want to share that, but.
At Percy, I can't.
You can't, wow. You can't, but.
Well, maybe I'm just-
Just, so I-
I'm being a good person, they, they were saying why we're seeing that coming in.
Yeah, and sometimes just asking a question, you probably get parents to bother your stuff, and from a administrative process, just capturing things and certainly kind of, it's like coding, you know? Example, sickness, you know, or possibly, you know, anything like, whatever. You know, but capturing perhaps some of those things, or it's a vacation, or, uh, you know, something that you get back, again, there's more data. But, you know, I see from, just from the test results, I mean, I heard for the GPA, I mean, I mentioned that, that impacts test results of that. You know, just all around has an impact, so there's definitely a, uh, an incentive for the administration to focus on that.
I mean, I, I see the data, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm, like, data is cute, so, like, the correlation between taking mental health day or staying a free weekend with your, with your parents versus people who have passed may be more in time to have a lower GPA to start with, like, I just, I think that maybe, like, if we could look and see our districts have this, I guess, the point, but like, I don't really want to get involved with families and what they, like, are maybe, unless it's like a major problem or something. I mean, you know, people travel for, to see families, there was a lot of that going on, but we haven't seen families through, you know? It's, it's a hard, you know, thing to monitor.
Yeah, kind of just, in fact, his point, I think it's very possible to present. And then first, maybe it was all, okay, that, that's interesting. As a parent, maybe it's more cognizant choices about excuse absences. And that's what they try to try, going to their pension, being a school year, remember Percy did, do something like that.
Well, Percy's also in a position where they could incentivize by dangling fingers in front of kids that they really want, like parking spots, and, I mean, we saw it after, we did that, and you, we don't really have that. So there's not much we can do outside of presenting. And I agree with you. But showing that, like, again, when I, when I heard the response from the, from the parents in the, in the room, I don't know that those parents have ever seen a display before, you know, their board back. You know, and, and when they see the effects on absenteeism on grades, I don't think, parents may not have ever heard that, of what the actual impact is. So in a, in a way, to present that to our families and our parents and our community, I, I, I'd love to see a downside to it.
No, that's my opinion, I agree with the presentation of that, and then it's.
You, you still can't make anybody come, you still can't make anybody not take a vacation during the school year. We don't want to have that thought. But, but if we can show what the impact of them making that decision is on their student, on their child's grades, I think that's what we're here for.
So is the direction to bring back attendance data to the board for a board meeting?
Well, ultimately, I'd like to present that for, to, for the district home to open house next year. If the board wants to see it prior to.
I'd like us to get prior because what if you don't find the same, like, how, what is the measurement we're asking for? Attendance based on what, what achievement, is it test score, is it a report card, is it?
And we may not be able to show that.
So we're just gonna show, how many, how many days kids are going to stop average, district-wide?
Sure.
That tells me that kids versus, I would like to, I don't know, I guess, it's good to know. Because I guess, like, these are future board meeting topics, right? So this is a topic to bring to the board. Because I don't tell my principals exactly what to bring in at their open houses. So I'm under the impression, this is, these are topics to bring for board meetings, no? I don't have any question. So we can start there, any good, something?
That's fine, you can start, and I'll finally have your presentation for the board.
I would also like to say that somewhere in my mind, I seem to remember that in the field of education, all of the administrators, teachers, and anyone who goes into the field of education has learned of the correlation between grades and absenteeism. And I know there are articles out there, there's studies out there, and I don't think the administration has, has to go through and really then reveal. I just have a little study out there, I know, you know, the years of the on board, I read those things. And I don't know if, how hard it's going to be to get the hard data from last year. And I don't think you just want one year, I think you're kind of looking for more from parents.
How are we trending, sure?
Yeah, how are we trending? And I don't know if.
And the year that we're remote, is, is it an anomaly? Which can be.
Well, yeah, but I think that's what, in my opinion, I think that's going to create a lot more work for the administration to do. I don't know how they keep attendance and how they do, I'm not interested in cuts because I don't think we've cut, the order to cut here in Maryland.
No, you're, and that's why I said when I ended it, I'm just, it's simply copy and paste. I'm just showing an example of how somebody did it in a natural way.
Right. Well, honestly, it's a cap, let's say, you are here tonight presenting. I, I would be more inclined to say, you know, steer the board toward the current literature that's out there. And you could even go so far as to put that link to the literature in the PTA newsletter or on the West, instead of having the administration. I mean, I think what you want to do is you want the community to go, oh, yay, you go, or can't believe what I did. And I just, I'm in the more of your opinion, give them the link, let them read the literature, let them make their decisions. As Becky was saying, you can't tell people when to take a patient.
But to go back to what Jenny said, I think what we're talking about here is making this a future topic, right? Correct. So is there enough interest here to direct the administration to give us some information on this? And then to set this as an agenda by a future board?
Oh, I'll start, no, I prefer just to have a link pushed out for the parents. So I'm a straw hole, no.
I, I, we talked about this briefly, and I, being at two or three, this was never being pushed for the year because of the fact that, and it hasn't had a lot of people's practice, and they got their children off at school, like, they think, oh, they're going to college. But that is not what happens, like, and, and some of these things at high school level, as we talked about, just don't transfer over to the elementary and middle school level because of just the dependence and independence based on age and things like that. So I, I, like, I like the idea of stressing the point that friends are connected to being in class. I just, I'm trying, I'm having a very, I have part time trying to think, like, a presentation like this to something that, that can be more than just one slide of how it impacts, like, like this one slide where it says about impacting grades, that I, I don't know how to leave the rest of that to our, to our middle school.
Those are the answers right now.
I don't know, I don't know because I need more information. So I guess no for right now, because I don't, I, I, like, I like the idea, but I don't understand how it's gonna apply. And I, and we need everyone else's conversation to help.
I would say unless the administration feels that there's a chronic issue with absences, and they feel that we should show us that data, I don't know.
I would actually say yes, and I feel that part of our responsibility is to, to support our parents in any way possible. And if it is something, as much as not necessarily showing those specific data to the list to the district, but sharing the effects that have been studied and have been produced in multiple studies, the correlation. I think it's certainly supportive that it would be something that we would, we should do.
And I mean, yes, as well, we'll see the data. Unfortunately, both won. Thank you all for your input. There's also a future topic for consideration, policy, and I paid advertising for the soccer pitch, uh, being pitched, but. Okay, next up is closed session, we are having a closed session today. We'll entertain a moment, you can see the issues that, that the school has, I mean, that we're good to see, but, you know, nice to be able to visualize the issues that we are actively dealing with, deciding to make decisions. So I appreciate everybody's participation too, and, and your questions afterwards. So again, that was a good meeting, if we have anything like that before we move to the chairman?
I just wanted to clarify that the bring-in for on the 27th is a prayer trails. I think you said you put earlier the letter sheet, so it's prayer trails, so make sure it's a little bit.
What is it?
Bring-in for the 27th. How's it going? 27.
I've got it.
Prayer trails.
That prayer trail, I think it's a little less than I should, but I apologize.
Which one, which one?
Prayer trail. Okay. I would share my community engagement, so one, I did, and it was with a, and you go with the C D S.
Yeah, Marner, you weren't here at that meeting, so there's a, a really gaining chief, it's got a bunch of opportunities for us to sign up. Obviously, we can have a little two-point clear of the legal tax, so if we're gonna be scheduling for that meeting. Go do it. Yes?
Oh, it only has one name, I see. Okay, so we was in Iowa, and then you was in Florida. And then it said, okay, so it just lists one name, just lists the person, the first town.
It's open to all, it's open to all.
You can all, yeah.
Correct.
No, I, but we, we have, well, the whole point of that is so that we can tell, say, J D's company, we can say, you know, J D's company, you know, somebody on the head side of the board.
That's totally fine, it just confused me on how this is, we're writing a text with that.
Okay, I want to take a moment to second to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at 8:40. 7:00, moved by Friedland, second by Kamara. Last chance, if you have any questions, we'll probably take a little hold. Let's do a tour of Indian Grove before the construction begins. Please.
Okay, next to that, so, I, I agree, that's better timing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
You said what?
Oh, the B E B. Yes.
On said.
Yes.
Friedland, yes, Freddie.
Yes.
I will guess, this will.
Yes.
And, um.
Yes. We're adjourned, it's due on October 17th.